Okay, we'll call our quarterly budget meeting to order. Mr. Malaney, the floor is yours. Budget update.
Okay, thank you. I have the budget update for the nine months ended March 31st, 2024. At this point in time, although the stepping level raises have been paid out or adjusted for on the salary, so we have a much better idea where we stand with each individual line item. For academic classroom teachers, we've expended $24,613,918. We have $19,684,096 left as a budget balance. We're anticipating $18,795,000 in expenses with a surplus in that, those lines of $888,470. Usually at this point in time, with 15 pay periods, there should be 42.31% remaining. That's why with 44% remaining, we have a surplus in that line. Do a lot to more breakage than we're anticipating at the beginning of the year, plus some mid-year breakage going along. For academic programs, we're anticipating a $560,061 surplus for the same reason. Academic support for the instructional line, we're anticipating $85,441. There's a large number of deficits that are coming up now. As you recall, we opened up a couple of different contracts, the clerical for one and the custodians for another, to address some of the issues from the original contracts that were settled. And particularly with the clerical, this clerical line item that's under academic support, that's the technicians and the IT people downstairs. So that was a rather large increase. We were losing a lot of people to different organizations and we weren't being able to get anybody to come work for us with the money that was being offered for the techs. So for the clerical line, we're anticipating a $276,000 deficit. As you recall, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, directors and coordinators, we set some money aside for raises for those, that $100,000 at the end. But as you can see, we will have deficits in all those lines, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the directors, the department heads, the principals. We had already prepared their contracts prior to the budget being passed last year. And the aides were also anticipating a deficit in that. Again, we opened up, we had a large increase in their contract last year and we have additional aides in the system, based primarily on special ed for those one-on-one issues that we really have to make sure we pay those. So for overall, for academic support, we anticipate a deficit of $378,489. Non-academic support, again, like the clerical, we increased, or we changed the contract after the budget was passed. So we're anticipating $128,000 deficit. Custodial, we also opened up that contract for a small amount. Security maintenance. And again, the aides line is off, but that's also substitute aides isn't that one. So they actually are more for academic. We anticipate surpluses in attendance and drivers. We've been running our bus yads at a lower staff than would really like it, and you're going to see another corresponding deficit on the other side for transportation that we've vended out. So we're anticipating a surplus in attendance of 48,000, drivers of 616,000, and clerical part-time at 20,000. So a total of $438,479 surplus. So a total surplus on the expense side of $1.5 million. I don't know if anybody has any questions now, or I should just keep going?
What's that?
I'll say my team.
Okay.
All right, moving on to expenses. The only two real main areas of deficits that we're looking at currently, tuitions, we're anticipating a deficit of about a million dollars. We anticipate a surplus in translation services of 204,000. Supplies will probably be holding back about 100,000. So a total deficit of academic expenses is 695,000. Natural gas, we increased that budget slightly and we had a very calm and warm winter. So there were very few, much fewer heating days. So we anticipate a surplus of 442,600. Transportation, we're anticipating a deficit of 800,000, which will again be offsetting, hopefully with a transfer later from some of the surpluses in the salary line items. And gasoline and postage, we're anticipating small surpluses of 42,000 and 13,000. So a total deficit of 302,000 for our non-academic expenses. Total expenses, a deficit of 997,590. When you look at the 1.58, 508 million dollar surplus, overall, we're anticipating a surplus of approximately 5,010,932. Sufficient funds to get through the end of the year. One of the things when we're looking at with the tuition is it's larger than we budgeted. We've kept that line steady for a couple of years. And we do have a large number of students who will be aging out next year, at the end of this year and next year. So that number should be coming back down to where it's budgeted now. And hopefully with savings from the RDC will also be in there. So overall, I think we're in very good shape. And that's where we stand right now.
Okay, any questions, members? Mrs. Perdios?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm seeing, I guess I'm looking specifically at the drivers here. So we have about seven, well, 650,000 extra that we had budgeted for paying our drivers and our attendants. And we're 800,000 under in outside transportation services. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So we're basically now going to be taking salary money that, for our QPS employees and giving it to these transportation.
Correct.
Is there any advice you could offer us on that as far as?
I think we're embargoning right now, so I don't think it'd be appropriate to talk about unless it was an executive session.
I just meant strategies of, you know, things like that. So, okay, thank you for that. And then the tuition, did we, did we have an abnormal amount more this year of?
The numbers, the numbers are up and we do have, we've had a lot of placements. We had a deficit in that line item last year of close to a million dollars as well. Historically, we've been around 160, 165 students. We have about 180 students in outside placements right now.
Okay, and you said a bunch of those are going to be aging out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just reminding, well, this is typical, a budget this size. And I know the A.R.N. will do the A.R.N. transfers appropriately to fill the gaps, switching the money around. We do this on the city side as well each and every year. So any other questions, Mr. Malaney? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
Budget finances adjourned.
Called to order the Quincy Public School Committee meeting for May 8th, 2024. Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
President.
Mrs. Cahill?
Present.
Mr. Gattro?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Perdios?
Present.
President.
Student of North Quincy, student every time of a mayor, Penneriede.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In memoriam.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have two memoriams tonight. If you could keep in your thoughts and prayers these individuals and their families who recently passed away. These are individuals who are QPS employees. First is Peter Mosello, recently passed away at the age of 100, a lifelong Quincy resident. He had a combined 44 years of service for the city of Quincy versus a highway department staff member, then a Quincy police officer, and finally as the QPS food services messenger for 15 years before his retirement at age 84. So impressive record. Next is Ann Foster, a special education teacher for over 25 years at the Marymount, Snug Harbor, Adams and Moncler Elementary Schools. Ms. Foster also served as the vice president of the Quincy Education Association. Again, if you can keep these two individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
So now we'll call open forum, which is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to QSC Open Forum at quinsypublicschools.com. Superintendent's report.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. The first item on my superintendent's report is the Quincy High School History Bowl team update. The History Bowl team was recently in Washington, D.C. to compete in the national championships. Team members Ramona Benzel, Conrad Brown and Eddie Giza won the top place in their bracket, which is amazing. Eddie Giza also competed in the JV History B National Championships, placing 13th out of 151 students, a great accomplishment. Quincy High School's History Bowl team also qualified to compete in the International History Olympiad, which will be held in London in July of 2025. And thank you to team coach James Akita for guiding this team to their victories. Again, congratulations on these great accomplishments. Next is the upcoming, we have a number of upcoming Quincy Public Schools events, and I'll just go through them with you. Calendar invitations will be sent out to the school committee, of course. The first is the annual Quincy High School Fashion Show will be held on Thursday, May 9th at 7:00 p.m. in the Lloyd Hill Auditorium, featuring the original creations of fashion technology students assisted by students from the Broadcasting, Graphic Design and Carpentry Technology Program. So thank you to Mr. Segala and all of his CVTE team for making this a possibility. Next is the Boston Celtics and our Bella Insurance will host the third, third annual All-Star Carnival on Friday, May 10th from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Veterans Memorial Stadium for students from, which is great, all five middle schools this year. Last year, we had two. They expanded it to all five middle school students, which is great. These students will participate. They qualified through their excellent school attendance as well as their participation in the writing and art contest. So thank you to our Bella and the Boston Celtics for making this great day available to our middle school students at all five middle schools, which is great. The Quincy Multicultural Festival will return to Pageant Field on Saturday, May 11th from noon to 4:00 p.m., showcasing the diverse cultures of our community through music, food, art and culture. Again, I would encourage everyone to attend. It's a great event, year in and year out. Next is the Quincy Public Schools is collaborating with Walker Therapeutics to present a virtual parent academy on understanding anxiety on Tuesday, May 15th at 6:30 p.m. via Zoom. And we're doing it via Zoom so that parent, as many parents as possible can participate from home during their busy schedules. Next, the middle school spring track season will come to a close on Thursday, May 16th with the citywide track meet at 3:30 p.m. at Faxon Field. On Saturday, May 18th, the annual grades five through eight robotics competition will be held at Quincy High School beginning at 10:00 a.m. Also, on May 18th, the Moncler Elementary School will host the 88th Annual May Festival from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The annual art show will be held on Monday, May 20th at 5:00 p.m. at Quincy High School and Thursday, May 23rd at North Quincy High School at 5:30 p.m. Almost done. There's a lot going on. The Quincy Public Schools Physical Education Staff is hosting Community Fitness Night for students and parents in kindergarten through grade five on Tuesday, May 21st at 6:00 p.m. at Veterans Memorial Stadium. Our newest QPS families are invited to the Welcome to Kindergarten Parent Academy on Thursday, May 30th at 6:00 p.m. at Central Middle School to learn about the curriculum and learning opportunities for their students. And lastly, the spring concert schedule for individual schools is being finalized and will be shared at the next school committee meeting. Citywide music concerts are scheduled for May 20th at 6:00 p.m. at Quincy High School for the All-City Strings Program and May 23rd at 6:00 p.m. at North Quincy High School for the All-City Jazz Band. So with that, that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next we go, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, of course. Although, where are you? Where, where? No. You're not on here. Wait a minute, try this one.
I'll try it.
Is that me?
Yep.
Okay. Just a point of clarification. So on here, it says parent academy with Walker Therapeutics, May 14th and June 4th. I believe you said a different date, so I was confused.
So I have, let's see, on my schedule here.
Tuesday, May, Tuesday, May 14th.
What did I say?
And then there's a follow-up on June 4th.
Okay, so what was Tuesday, May 15th?
So I have.
That's a mistake because the 15th is Wednesday.
Okay, so this is correct. It says May 14th. So it's, the parent academy is on May 14th and June 4th?
Exactly, Tuesday, May 14th, yes.
Tuesday, May 14th.
Tuesday, May 14th is the parent academy.
Okay, not June 4th?
And June 4th.
And June 4th, the follow-up, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So again, for that, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Tuesday, May 14th at 6:30 p.m. via Zoom. So thank you for that clarification.
Okay, great. And you're not on there. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is old business. We need a roll call votes for the following policy sections. Mr. Gattro, would you like to say anything?
No, we, I'm not trying to.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
We discussed all these items in Policy Subcommittee and they're eligible for a vote, so I'd like to make a motion if I could.
Okay.
Second.
I don't know, do we need to take these individually?
Yes.
So the first is school-based public access defibrillation. It's removal and renumbering of subsections. So I make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Second item is Policy Book Section 7.5.3 CPR Training and Abdominal Thrust. I make a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Third item is Policy Book Section 10.11, Student Health Services and Requirements. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
And the final, final item, Mr. Superintendent, is Policy Book Section 10.11.4 Administering Medication to Students. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdios?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. In new business, FY 2025, City of Quincy Budget Overview. Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. It's that time of year, as we know. We presented Monday night to the Quincy City Council, and I'd just like to go over an overview tonight, and then I know we'll be setting up meetings going forward. The amount this year is $134,186,467. It's up about $6.6 million from last year. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of that background and some of the education spending. So despite Chapter 70 only going up about $915,000 this year, and the state's having the wrong revenue challenges, not a criticism, but our budget's up 6.6. So that is all on the, coming from the municipal city side. So the school spending is up 5.2%. The regular budget is 4.5% increase, so we're seeing an increase greater than the overall increase. Just for stats, the Boston inflation rate's 3.3, the national is 3.5%, so exceeding the, the rate of inflation. When you calculate the school budget, and I get these questions all the time, we have to remind people that the school budget, all those things that contribute to the schools' being successful aren't in the school budget, I should say. As we know, you know, debt service, part of debt service is all school projects. Public buildings, all the working on indoor buildings, that's not in the budget. Natural resources, all the work they do on the grounds, that's not in the budget. Police Department, traffic supervisor, school, police, resource office, not in the budget. DPW does work on the school yards and the grounds, it's not in the budget. So when you add all those other contributing departments to the budget, we're, we're 51.3% of the city's expenditures are related to education. I'd also say that it's, it's also a fact that communities' valuations, property valuations are tied to the success of a school district. A school district does well, usually see property values increase. It's one of the issues people look at when they move into a city. Two is on the school infrastructure stuff that we've done over the years. I think since I've been here, we've done 16 MSBA projects. We've got a total of 258 million in projects. We just recently get the corner middle school approved. That, that's going to push the number well over the $300 million mark. So we have been paid or reimbursed by the SBA about 143 million. So the average reimbursement rate has been about 68%. So that is certainly a healthy number. The other thing I wanted to mention overall in the budget, I said it the other night, you know, there's a lot of districts struggling right now, and there's a lot of reasons for that. One of them I would suggest is not embracing new growth of development. But I want to remind the public that the decision we made a few years ago to restructure our debt and fully fund the pension obligation, which doesn't involve the teachers, but other school employees are part of the Quincy retirement system. And we did it at the right time. We got a historic low interest rate of 2.62%. The reason we did it, one of the reasons we did it was, at the time, the retirement system was only 43% funded. And under the state law, we would have had to have fully funded by 2040. So what does that mean? Every year, if you took the graph, the graph would have been just like that. Because whatever they come up short in retirement board, the bill comes to City Hall and we have to make up the difference. So, so this year, had we not done this, the bill from the retirement board would have been $26 million more. And it would have been a croaker in this budget. So I, I just want to say publicly, thank those city councils that voted for this. This is a huge changer in our budget for the next several years. So I did want to note that. A couple of other things, I'll say a couple of obvious things, but you know, of the 20th largest school districts, as far as class size, Quincy's fifth. Of the districts with pupil count greater than 5,000, we're seventh. The average school size class in Quincy is less than the state average. Teacher retention out of the 20th largest school districts, Quincy ranks number one in teacher retention. Of the districts of pupil count greater than 5,000, we rank seventh. All excellent numbers, which to me is a, really a tribute to what's going on in our system. So I want to thank my colleagues, the great work that each of you do, the superintendent and his team, and of course, those out each and every day in our schools, the principals, administrators, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the entire staff that work so hard. We try to provide the resources and the tools they need to get the job done. And so I think this is a responsible budget. It's not as, not as perhaps, and that's not the right word, I was going to say drunus, but it, it's a little tighter than last year and meets all our obligations, but there's not a lot of extra money here to create all kinds of new programs. So we got to be a little responsible going forward because I think the state issue on local aid is not going to be fixed quickly. I think the next two years are going to be very challenging on local aid. So we got to be really careful going forward. I don't want to overcommit and then all of a sudden, two years out, we have to deal with some cuts. So with that, I know it goes in the committee and I know the superintendent will prepare their thoughts on the budget and how we should move forward. And with that, I thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Lebo?
Not a question, just a comment for all of the school committee and the, and the administration that we did not use SRF funds for staffing, and that's another reason why those other districts are suffering so much, even though it said at the beginning, don't staff up with this money. And we really tried to hold to that really, really tightly. And I think that to all of us and the school administration for making sure that didn't happen.
And we did the same on the city side. We did not use upper money for, and, and that is part of the trouble with some of these other communities, for sure.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next, we have, oh, presentation by Hope and Comfort Program, Mrs. Papil and Ms. McDonald.
Actually, we have a Dr. Carter.
Presenting? Ms. McDonald is here too.
And?
Oh, hi, hi.
And?
Carrie Carter.
Carrie Carter.
Carrie Carter.
Yep. Sorry about that. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I am so happy to introduce to you the transformative world of Hope and Comfort Organization, where compassion meets action to ensure every student family has access to essential hygiene products such as soap, toothpaste, toothbrushes, shampoo. At the heart of their mission lies a profound belief that basic necessities should never be a barrier to education or dignity. Founded with a vision to alleviate the burdens of financial insecurity, they have partnered with Snug Harbor Elementary School to provide free hygiene products to all students and their families. By addressing this fundamental need, they have empowered students to focus on their studies and thrive in their educational journey, unburdened by worries and personal care essentials. However, their commitment to serving the community extends far beyond the walls of a single school. With a desire to make broader impact, Hope and Comfort harbors ambitions to expand their reach to encompass all middle schools across the district this year, next year, sorry, next academic year. By extending their services, they aim to create a ripple effect of positivity, fostering healthier, more confident students prepared to excel both academically and personally. I would like to recognize the team at Snug Harbor. Principal Scott Perfetto, Assistant Principal Diane Babcock, counselors Joanna Goodwin, Shiloh Schuboth and Amy Carey Shiny, as well as the teachers and staff jumped right in to make sure their families got these products. It was a huge delivery and they assembled in the hallways and put the bundles together. It was just really outstanding. I really appreciate what they did. They, they really welcomed this organization and advocated for their families to have these products. Joining us here tonight, as we said, is Carrie Carter, who's the CEO of Hope and Comfort. We also have Tanya Kapawana, Director of Marketing and Communications. Abby McDonald, who is a Strategic Engagement Manager for Hope and Comfort. And there's Abby. Before we jump in and before I hand this presentation over to Carrie, I just wanted to share with you Joanna Goodwin, who's one of the counselors at Snug Harbor. She created a survey to try to assess the impact of these products and, you know, to make sure we were meeting the needs of the families and just their thoughts. And so I'm just going to read a few quotes from, from the responses. "Thank you for the supplies. The hygiene bundles are great and helpful. Thank you very much for your help. We are grateful. We are grateful for the amount provided. Thank you." It was very, it was very helpful, especially with a house full of girls. I can relate. I have six sisters, so growing up, we needed a lot of products. My, and another comment was, "My son enjoyed putting things away in the bathroom." And just, you know, the thought of a little boy being excited about having the things he needs was really touching to me and impactful. I think this was an amazing program for our community and thank you so much. So now I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Thank you so much, Maureen. Thank you to all of you for inviting us here this evening. Our point in wanting to come and speak with you is to let you know who we are, what we do, what the problem of hygiene insecurity is, and also ask for your help. This is a hidden crisis, which we can share. I will be sharing a couple of stats with you. And we have a vision that every school in Massachusetts will be hygiene secure. Right now, we are serving 150 schools across the Commonwealth, and we are partnering with Quincy Public Schools to pilot a process, an operational process, in order to make this the most effective as possible, with the thought that we don't want any kid to miss school because he or she does not have the products that they need. And also with the larger vision, as we look beyond the state of Massachusetts, we have a vision that, once again, Massachusetts can lead the way and provide these items on a national level, perhaps as part of a SNAP program. perhaps as part of a SNAP program or a SNAP-like program. None of these products are covered today with any federal program. So with that in mind, I'll spend a couple of minutes telling you who we are, what we do, and what we're doing for the kids in Quincy Public Schools and our thoughts for the future. Does that work for everyone? Oh, and Kevin, thank you for asking us. Kevin and Maura have been unbelievable. And also, there's another person on your staff that you'll see a one-minute video of her, Leslie Britson. An amazing woman, and I can tell you, she is the reason why we picked Quincy Public Schools to start this pilot. It's because of her. I went to visit her last winter after she wrote a letter which brought me to tears, quite frankly. And you'll see the video I took on my phone that day in her office. And once again, she got me teary. So here we are tonight. So with that, so what's the problem? What is hygiene insecurity? It's lack of access to these essential products like soap and toothpaste and menstrual products that we take for granted every single day. I'm sure everybody today got up, took a shower, brushed his or her teeth, went to work, felt pretty confident because they looked their best. Lots of people can't do that. As I mentioned, none of these products are covered by SNAP or WIC or any formal program. So the impact of not having these products is great. And you can see some stats here, we can cite all of them. But just to give you a high-level understanding, so physical health. This is taken from a variety of research projects that were done. 33% of the people suffering from hygiene insecurity reported physical health issues from being unable to keep themselves clean or to keep their teeth clean. Mental health issues. School attendance. We know that as one example, kids who don't have access to toothpaste and toothbrushes are three times, three times as many, or excuse me, are three times more likely to miss school than their peers. And the last one item there is about unemployment, or excuse me, employment. We know that 1 in 8 people who doesn't have access to these products don't even go on a job interview because they don't have the products to look or smell clean, thus perpetuating the issue. In Massachusetts, there are about 2.3 million people who are affected by hygiene insecurity. And in Quincy, there are 4,200 households who are receiving SNAP benefits. So we know that there are 4,200 households in Quincy who are experiencing hygiene insecurity. It's a litmus test for us. So what's the solution? Well, there's two, two levels of solutions that we are attacking right now. One is the local solution, which is basically distributing these products free of charge, which we're doing in Quincy, as well as one of the reasons why we would like to, and we approached Maura and Kevin and asked to partner with you, is we would like to do research that really catches the attention of people at higher levels in governments, at the state level and at the federal level eventually, to show the impact that this does have. So we will be doing research to show, hey, kids who don't have this stuff don't go to school as often. So obviously, their education is impacted. Having access to these products affects people's health, their dignity, and their confidence. So who are we and how do we operate? So we are basically a nonprofit distributor of products. You can see on the left side of the screen our sources of income. Individuals make up the majority of our cash income, foundations, corporations. And for the first time ever, in the first quarter of this year, we received some state money to the tune of $150,000. Right now, it's a tough budget year, as everyone knows, and I just heard you speak about that, Mayor. It's a tough year this year. We are, we have an amendment that just made it through the House for $350,000. And we're working on the Senate side to get that same $350,000. So fingers crossed, we don't have to go to conference on that. So that's how we get our income. We acquire these products because of our bulk purchasing. We're able to purchase at much less than if you or I walked into a CVS. We buy in bulk. We have three warehouses where we store the product. One in Needham, where our main location is. We also rent warehouse space in Bridgewater and in Fitchburg. We'll bring the product in, and then we have our partners come and pick it up. So we've got 500 community partners like schools, food pantries, et cetera, across the state who will come and partner with us. Here's an example on this slide. The top row there are food banks. We're lucky enough to have the Chief Operating Officer of the Greater Boston Food Bank be on our board. And we distribute to them a trailer load of truck, excuse me, a trailer of soap every month to them. And you can see some of our other food pantry partners. South Shore is another example from this area. We also partner with schools and health organizations and other nonprofits that you can see on that bottom line there. This is how much we're growing. So our founder started the organization out of his garage in 2011. In the past, what will be six years, we will have gotten 10 times bigger. We expect to distribute about 5 million products this year, which is a significant increase, obviously, over what we did in 2023. Our first huge milestone goal is to get to 20 million products. So in Quincy, in 2023, we distributed a little over 30,000 units of product through the three main partners that you can see there. And I, we were actually at Interface this afternoon and heard from Rick that many of you, if not all of you, volunteer there or have done work there. He spoke very highly of you and asked me to say hello and thank you. So those are the three main partners that we have here in Quincy. This year, just this spring alone, we will have distributed through Snug Harbor to all the kids there and their families 33,000 units. So already eclipsing what we did last year in Quincy. You can see, it's a little bit hard to see on this, on the screen, but this is a quote from the letter that I received from Leslie. And even better than a quote, here is a minute of her speaking about what these products mean to the kids in Quincy Public Schools.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm so appreciative of that. I found Hope and Comfort, and that Hope and Comfort was there actually at a perfect time to really help out some, some kids in need and some families in need. The person who hide, the lack of personal hygiene products and everything that goes along with it, it's pretty all-encompassing. It affects school attendance and school truancy, whether a child or a teen feels comfortable coming to school, being in the presence of their peers and their educators, not feeling as though they're standing out because of lack of personal hygiene. They feel like they can blend in, they don't stand out. It increases their confidence, it improves their attendance, which therefore would end up improving their academic progress and their school stability. So it's really life-changing. You know, a shampoo bottle or a package of, you know, anything wipes or toothpaste or toothbrushes, it does a lot more than just the actual physical things. It improves the psyche, and it gives these kids hope, and they want to continue going to school and to do well.
And that's what we all want, right? So you've got a superstar there with Leslie. So just to wrap up what we have done with Snug Harbor is we're providing these essential hygiene products. The first distribution was about 11,000 products. You can see the listing of items there that were distributed. Our next one will be about another 21-ish thousand products in May. So the kids will have enough products to take home over the summer. And in the fall, we plan to expand to the, to the three high-need middle schools. So you have five, and there are three with need over 50%. So that's, that's next on our sites. We have the funding to do that. We've got the products, we will have the products in our warehouse ready to go. Our mission, our goal, if you will, is to make sure or see if we can raise the funding to provide all of the kids in need in Quincy with the products that they need. And you'll note, there are the very last bullet on the page. Let us know if you have any leads on that front. We're all in it together to help, help the kids at Quincy. So with that, I will wrap it up and say thank you for your partnership. Thank you for the invitation to come here. Thanks so much to Kevin and Maura for being just fantastic partners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, anyone? Want, Emily?
I think this is fantastic, really. It is fantastic. You were so right about these kids who don't have these basic products and their families who don't have the basic products either. So my question was, do you send home products for the family also?
We did that at Snug Harbor. Yeah, we sent the family pack home.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. That's what I was hoping. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergoli.
Quick question. What are the five middle schools, three middle schools that are going to be included in this program?
Do you have those right there? I don't remember.
Southwest, I'm sorry, Southwest.
Point in Broad Meadows.
Yes.
Broad Meadows, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. No, that's okay.
So they all have a student population, a high-need student population over 50%. Which is why we chose to target them rather than go to all of the middle schools.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perdiós. Thank you for doing this work. This is really amazing to have as a, as a vision and a goal. And it's great that you're working on this and making a difference. Are families at, are all families at Snug? And your plan for the three middle schools, would all families receive this or just the ones that you've identified are receiving SNAP benefits?
So at Snug, all families received the packets. We need to work with Maura for the other schools and really look at what's the difference between the percentage. I think the percentage in the three schools are in the 50 to 75 percentage range. So we'll work with Maura on that to figure out, do we give it to everyone? Or do we give it to the people in need? Because we're always, are the kids in need, we're always thinking about, how do you do this in a dignified manner to make sure that the kids don't stand out in a way that makes them uncomfortable?
Right. Definitely. That would be my concern, is that I want to be able to stretch this as far as we can to hit all those families, those 4,200 families. But, but you're right, you don't want to just identify some students over another. But you don't want to be giving to families that may not need it versus a family that, that could use it at another school.
Exactly. We're actually part of, a founding member of the American Hygiene Coalition. And one of, so that's 10 organizations across eight states were actually the largest. Anyway, there's a, the Chicago-based one focuses exclusively on Chicago public schools. And what they do is they figured out a sticker that they put on, that they educated the kids about, that they put on certain teachers, nurses, guidance counselors, et cetera, as doors and said, if you need anything, go in here. Now, we'll have to figure that out. I, that's what we always grapple with. How do you make the kids feel comfortable? But you don't necessarily have to give everything to everyone. So we're going to defer to Maura and her team on that.
Excellent. And the last thing I was just thinking as you were speaking, especially on the dental hygiene that you had mentioned. I know in the elementary schools, they have a dental program that comes in. And I'm not sure what the name of that program is, but I know, I know there's a dental program that I think may give out some type of toothpaste and toothbrushes already. So that might be, I don't know if it's someone to partner with or someone to just kind of be aware of what they're giving out and who they're giving it out to. So that, again, if you have to reallocate resources to just stretch, I know every, every dollar and every product is important. So stretch it to the, to get to the families that need it most.
That's great to know. Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
So thank you very much for, for the work that you do. Thank you for choosing Quincy. Thank you to Leslie for being the advocate. I had a similar question to Mrs. Perdiós about how do you not make these kids feel uncomfortable by, by choosing? But I also wanted to ask, so is this a single distribution? Is it episodic? Is it over the course of a year? And is this kind of a one-and-out pilot with, with the city? Or have you permanently adopted Snug?
This is not a single distribution. The, it's a great question. Thank you for asking. We plan to maintain this partnership. Because the whole point of being hygiene secure is not just to have it right now, it's to have the mental peace of mind that I'm going to have it next month and I'm going to have it the month after. So when we provided the products, we, we know the average usage of what a person uses for these products over the course of a year. So we did the math and provided the products for three months. And now we'll do it for another three months. And we figured, we're thinking it's a three or four times a year distribution. And we'll, we'll keep doing that as long as we can keep raising the funding.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's actually another delivery scheduled in June. I think it might be June 6th. Okay, I didn't remember that. June 6th. So we, we took a look at like the number of people that were in a household. Like, you know, this team is so amazing and so good at what they do. And they really helped guide us. So I'm looking forward to, you know, moving things to the middle school. And I'm sure we're going to do it in a way that's dignified. You know, when we did this, you know, part of the reason we did the survey is to make sure we were like getting it right. And we did get some feedback, like if, you know, I don't use the products, can I return them? You know, so I do think, you know, some families might, we're going to have to engage families in the conversation and how they would like to receive these products, too. So maybe they have some ideas about how that will work in a dignified way.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. Do you have any ways to accommodate students that have skin conditions or allergies taking certain products?
Um, no. We have our basic products that we provide. And occasionally, we, and the basic products are seven categories. Soap, toothpaste, deodorant, shampoo, toothbrushes, menstrual products, and laundry detergent. Laundry detergent is actually an interesting one because we did a survey last summer and hadn't been thinking, hadn't been doing a ton of laundry detergent before and got strong feedback saying, we need laundry detergent. So no, we don't, because we're just trying to meet the basic needs in these seven categories first. When we do occasionally get donations from corporations who have that, we give it away right away.
Maura, would this be something we could keep track of to make sure that maybe there was another avenue that they might be able to get stuff that they need, especially if they were in a lower-income housing area that needed, they were in that lower amount? Maybe keep that on a separate?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Mrs. Perdiós.
Thought of one other question I wanted to ask. Also, I'm not sure how you would track, again, kind of looking at an expansion type of situation. If you had a child at one school and a child at another school, and you're providing for the family, you know, both children, do you know what I'm saying? So both children, so trying to figure out a way to just make sure that the family's getting the intended amount each. And, and I also love the idea of being able to return or donate back. Maybe that's a better term, donate back the items if a family might not need them so that that could be, again, reallocated. And I think the communication piece to, to families would be really important there. You know, if you're not going to use these, please return them. We absolutely can reuse them for other families in need. That might be a really good message.
Right. And so we, we had thought about that because, you know, we were looking at which schools to track at the middle schools because there'd be siblings in the elementary. So we're definitely going to have to make sure that we're not, you know, delivering twice, you know, too. Because the, they're, the packets are good. You know, there's enough, you understand your supply and how much families need for that period of time until the next arrival.
Abby, just wanted to add something.
Yes, of course.
Just to add another layer to your question and other folks' questions about making sure that students, you know, we're not double-dipping and kids feel like they're getting products in a dignified manner. So what we did when we did the first distribution with Snug, Joanna and I decided that the program would be an opt-out as opposed to an opt-in. So everyone in the school was able to get a bag, take it home. And she did tell me that, you know, I think she said there were a handful of families that returned it. But a lot of families were really appreciative of the product. So I imagine that we'll do a very similar process as we expand to the other schools. You know, everyone will get things for that first distribution. And then working with teachers, school nurses, really the folks that students know the best and are most comfortable with, we can come up with a system to make sure that kids are getting things that they need and they feel comfortable accessing them, too.
I do have a question, I think to piggyback off of Mrs. Hubley's, in terms of students who have allergic reactions to different soaps and
I think to piggyback off of Mrs. Hubley's, in terms of students who have allergic reactions to different soaps and, you know, do you purchase some items or do you just get them donated to like a bulk of, you know, a random laundry detergent? So you don't go out and specifically, to this case, maybe buy a bunch of products that are for skin sensitive kids who have allergies and things like that, that really have to be very specific on what they use for hygiene?
We, we do purchase. The majority of what is being distributed has been purchased by us.
Yeah.
And when we can, we always buy things that are fragrance-free, that, those types of things. They're just, maybe I didn't answer the question specifically enough. It's not highly specialized, but we will buy things that are fragrance-free that, you know, are, the most people can use them.
Another thing that we also want to be really cognizant about is folks with textured hair and being able to provide people shampoo that's appropriate for that. So we do, in addition to distributing a general shampoo, we also are able to provide sulfate-free shampoo for families as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. I just want to thank Kerry and your team from Hope and Comfort. When Leslie Britson brought this to us and Dr. Perkins and I and Mara met with you to discuss this possibility, we saw immediately that, wow, this can really help with our chronic absenteeism initiative. So we definitely wanted to get on board with this unique opportunity for Quincy, which I hope this partnership will continue and will continue to expand. But I think the, the most important result, which really kind of brought it home to us that this was so effective for our district is seeing the faces of our students and staff when they receive that product down at Snug Harbor. It was really amazing. Your logistical ability with regard to getting the product and distributing it to the schools and getting it out to our families was so smooth and efficient. It was amazing. So this partnership is super exciting for us. We have a number of initiatives to combat chronic absenteeism. This is just one of a litany. But this is one of the most exciting pieces of those initiatives, so.
Oh, that's great.
I just want to thank you and your team. And we look forward to continuing this partnership moving forward. So thank you all. And if you wouldn't mind coming up for a picture too, that would be great.
And we're going to be referencing you as we talk to other school districts around the Commonwealth to say, look what we're doing Quincy. We can, we can work with you as well. So thanks for the partnership.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'd love a picture.
That'd be great.
All right.
Great job.
Two? Yeah.
You gonna try it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Presentation. Mrs. Perk, Dr. Perkins and, I'm, Dr. Perkins! We have to get used to that. And Mr. Marani.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. That is a very tough act to follow, but luckily, this is a really fun topic. So I think we have lots of really good, exciting stuff to share with you tonight. And I'm here with Mr. Marani. And before I begin, I just want to thank the curriculum team and Mara and Julie and all of the people that helped put this together. Kisegala, Kim, Bridget. We are so fortunate, Kim Conley. We are so fortunate in this district to have such a talented curriculum and assessment team. So, you know, we started this summer program initiative during COVID. It has grown. It's expanded. It's changed. But we are now at the point where we say, all right, it's time to get ready for summer programs. And literally, everyone hops to it. So they all have their roles. They all have their programs that they organize and, and work on. And we absolutely have it down to a science, which makes our job much easier. So we are, I just am so thankful for them because they've really put a lot of hours and a lot of work into, into developing these programs. So I just want to remind you, before I talk about our objectives again for the summer, that last year, we serviced just about 1,500 students through our summer programs, which is really unheard of and pretty amazing. And we had just about 250 teachers that worked in our summer programs. And that does not include paraprofessionals. So as before, our goal is to provide opportunities that encourage students to be healthy and address the wellbeing of our staffs, staff and students. We are, develop programs that are aligned to the prerequisite standards. So preparing students for the next year. So what are those? Making sure that our programs have those key components that are going to get kids ready and make sure they really have a solid understanding of whatever is crucial to the next grade. We provide not only remedial and support opportunities, but also opportunities for academic enrichment, accelerated learning, and as I mentioned, academic support. And we have incorporated social, emotional components into our summer programs. And we really have been focused for the last few years on providing a range of opportunities. I really feel strongly that there is something for everyone in these summer programs. And I think that's why we've been so successful and why we're able to service so many students is because we do offer a wide range of activities in the district. So to get into some of our programs, so a tried and true program for us, we've been offering this program for years and years. We have expanded it. So it was, it used to be just Bridge to Reading. It's now Bridge to Reading and Math. And it works on helping students learn essential literacy and math skills in order to increase proficiency in the classroom. This program is an invitation-only program. So it's invitation-based. It's, students from all of our elementary schools are invited and, you know, based on their need. And it is specifically for students who are in need of additional support in areas like reading comprehension, literacy, critical thinking, math fluency, number sense, and other mathematical skills. It's open to students who are entering grades one through grade five. And it is a four-week in-person program that runs Monday through Thursdays. Last year, we had about 170 students who attended this program. The next program that we will be offering again, hugely successful program. This is a big seller for us. It's the Quest for Learning program. This program literally takes the entire Beechwood Knoll School. We have so many kids who participate in it. It's a summer program. It provides, that provides a range of enrichment opportunities in humanities, civics, language arts, and STEM. Last year, we had about 360 students who participated in this program, which is really pretty amazing. Students do things like explore books with various authors and illustrators. They immerse themselves in humanities topics so that they understand themselves and other people. They engage in a variety of science and technology and engineering activities. And it is open to students in grades one through five. And it is also a four-week in-person program that runs Monday through Thursday. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Marani to talk about the middle school programs.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Perkins. Good evening, everybody. So much like the elementary programming that we have throughout the summer, middle school and high school, which I'll present on momentarily, is really a balance of academics and enrichment. And ultimately, we're just trying to create programs that engage our students, keep them interested, keep them entertained, and keep them occupied throughout their, their summertime there. So as we look at our programming at the middle school level, Summer Boost will be offering again. That's a four-week program that will go from July 1st till the 25th. That's Monday through Thursdays, as it was last year. And that goes each day 8:30 until 11:30. This program is really aimed at addressing the academic gaps or any academic challenges that students may have encountered during this current school year to help them transition and prepare for their upcoming school year. So it's a great program, really to help kind of fill, you know, for, for the students who might need just a little extra time to prepare for the upcoming year. This program is a great program. We had over, I don't have the specific number in front of me. We had over 100 students participate last year. We're on track for that. Registration is open right now. We have over 50 registrations right now. And I'm sure that will continue to increase over the next few weeks. With Hands on Math, this program, near and dear to my heart as a former algebra teacher. Algebra is a very abstract subject. And there's a lot of concepts that are difficult for students to grasp. What this program does is it brings these abstract concepts and gives concrete access to our students. So it really allows them to use their hands to learn and understand these algebraic concepts. So it's a great program for students who are just looking to deepen their algebraic skills as they move forward. Similarly, it's the same schedule as Summer Boost. Both of these are held at Central Middle School. And right now, we're looking at approximately 50 students registered. And I expect that number to climb. STEM Academy, it's a little bit different from a programming standpoint. So there's two one-week sessions each week is Monday through Thursday. So the first one will be from July 8th until the 11th. The next one will be the following week, the 15th until the 18th. This is a project-based learning opportunity for students. So within those four days, they'll focus on design and engineering of particular projects. And so, for example, they might be building a bridge, building a tower. And what's great about this is they get to test out whether or not their designs hold up. So they'll actually build the structures that they're designing, physical structures, and test them out. So for example, can a bridge hold a certain amount of weight? And so, you know, I've presented a few times on the shift in science instruction where we're trying to get our students really to ask the questions and have that guide the learning process. This is a great, great avenue to support that initiative as well. And then at Central Middle School, it's not on here because Dr. Perkins will be talking about it momentarily. But we also have Swell Academy taking place at Central Middle School as well. This program, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe was new last year. Tremendous success, the Quincy Summer Theater Arts Academy. It's a two-week program. It's Monday through Friday. It's in the afternoon. So the nice part about this is students could be participating in the morning programs. And still, if they want to participate in this program, they, they can still do that. So the thing that I think stands out about this program, beyond the fact that it gives students an opportunity to perform over the summer, but it also gives them an opportunity to understand theater production. So it's choreography, writing, set design, and so much more that goes into the front end of putting on a performance. And it will culminate at the end of the program for a performance for families and friends. Great, great program. Shifting gears to high school. So of course, we'll be offering Summer Pathways to Success once again. This is our credit recovery program aimed for students in the rising 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. So it will be offered Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 12:30. It's a four-week program and it will begin on July 8th. The registration period will happen in early July prior to this program because we need to know kind of the end result of this school year to determine which students need to take advantage of this. So the registration process has begun, but we're going to extend that out to give as much time as possible for our students. Ladders to Success, another great program that we'll continue on with. This is 30, rising ninth graders. So students that are currently eighth-grade students going into ninth grade. Great, great opportunity for them to get exposure to health and wellness, financial literacy, technology, employability, and entrepreneurship. So essentially, this is similar to STEM in that it's, STEM Academy in that it's a project-based program. But I would describe it as a simulation. So students will be able to work on a project as if they were going to run and operate a food cart. So it's the, all the mechanics of building a business, from the front end of it, the planning and the implementation. Along the way, during this process, these students will be compensated for their time. So this is a mass hire program in terms of our funding source. So students can earn $16 an hour and up to 110 total hours. So students can earn for their time here, $1,760 during the summer. So there is a criteria for students to be invited. We work very closely with the principals at all five middle schools to make sure we're effectively targeting students that can benefit from this program. Just one added highlight to this, because we're talking about students entering high school, we also focus on making sure we take advantage of the fact that they're working in the high school to help them plan for their transition to high school. So we're just trying to connect with them with as many personnel, you know, principals, department chairs, and, you know, guidance, deans, anybody we can connect them with just so they have more familiar faces when they arrive in September for the school year. Summer Youth Works. This, I believe everybody here knows about this program. Another tremendously successful program and opportunity for 140 students to earn income over the summer. The rate is up to $17 an hour. They can, each student can earn 180 total hours throughout the summer, which puts them a little over $3,000 for that summer. We've partnered with public, private, nonprofit organizations. Roughly, I believe the number right now, though it's still climbing, is 33 total partners. Some of those partners include 101 Art Studio, Parks Department, GNL Labs, USS Salem, Campus Kinder House, the South Shore YMCA, many more. But what we're doing here is we're giving students an opportunity to work throughout the summer and build those skills that are required to become employees, hard workers, that know how to earn income. But the other added part to this is the Youth Works Institute. So another great component to this is students also have the opportunity to work part-time rather than full-time. And in the off days, they can attend Quincy College to get additional college credits. So they have to learn kind of how to juggle both work and college, which I think is a great experience for these students. And then we have Early College High School Pathway Summer Academy. We have a wide variety of courses for these students to take. Again, they can earn up to, if they took the four credit courses, they could earn up to eight credits. So essentially, they could take two courses throughout the summer. If it's a three-credit course, it will go from July 8th to August 9th. If it's a four-credit course, it will also start July 8th but run until August 23rd. Three new courses I just want to highlight, Website Design, Introduction to Programming, and Nutrition. And so with that, I'll hand it back over to Dr. Perkins to highlight additional offerings throughout the summer.
So for our students with disabilities, we have our CARES pre-K kindergarten program, which will be running at the Richard De Christopher Learning Center this summer. So we're very, very excited about that. It's about 93 kids, 95 kids that will be attending that program. And the program is focused on the continuation of the students' individual IEP goals. And again, this is invitation-based. It's based on IEP need. And then we have the CARES and Learning Center Program. This is a five-week program, half-day program, that will run out of Southwest Middle School. And this services about 200 students. And it's for students who are entering grades one through 12. And again, it is by invitation and it's based on a student's IEP needs and goals. We have the Transitional Kindergarten Program, another five-week program. This program's located at Clifford Marshall. And it's a continuation of the Transitional Kindergarten classes that we have. We have two classes in the district. And it's for students who are at risk of significant regression. And it's also based on the student's IEP and need, individual need. And it's designed to help them maintain their skills for the school year. And then the Language Development Class is also a continuation of the language development classes that run during the school year. It's located at Clifford Marshall. And it is for students who are entering grades one, all the way up to grade five. And then it also, the, the middle school... all the way up to grade five, and then it also, the middle school program runs at Southwest Middle School. And again, it's for students who are in danger of significant regression. And then for English language learners, we have had a really successful program at the elementary level, Camp Can Do. This program's run for quite a few years now. It's absolutely expanded. We've taken in quite a few more students. It's a four-week summer program for students entering grades one through five, and it is specifically for students who, based on their access scores, are at the emerging or developing level of English language proficiency, and it's a great opportunity for those students. And then at the middle school level, we have been running, again, for years, the Middle School SWEL Academy, and it's another four-week program, and it is for students entering in grades six through nine. And again, it's based on helping students increase their English language proficiency, and specifically in speaking and writing, and students work on increasing their academic skills, and they focus on science and local and national history. And it's a really fun program. The students really enjoy it. They do a lot with Quincy's history and going to the different sites throughout our city. We also offer some social-emotional supports and activities. So throughout all of our programs, we incorporate mindfulness activities and help students explore enriching activities that cultivate how peace and presence in your daily life. And social thinking concepts are throughout all of our programs, particularly, I would say, in our special education programs. So things like perspective-taking and problem-solving. We offer an online program. This is also part of the credit recovery. And so for students who are unable to come in, we do it two different ways. Students can come in and do Excelis with us, but they can also do it on their own, and we will monitor them throughout the summer and call and try to encourage them to keep going and have them, have a person that they check in with. And so it's just another way that we can help our students recover credits before they enter the next year. And we do offer the in-person Excelis as well with a supportive teacher in a small group. And then throughout all of our programs, we incorporate open parachute lessons, and students are able to use those materials as well as our instructors.
So similar to the embedded social and emotional learning initiatives that we have throughout the programs, we also, in our efforts to really drive up engagement and participation in these programs, we try to incorporate as many site-based events or field trips as possible in these programs. So there might be field days, a variety of field trips, so whether that's virtual, onsite, or a traditional field trip, you know, offsite. Some great highlights there are, you know, the picture you see there is the Rainforest Reptiles visit, so that may or may not be of interest to some people, but certainly the students enjoyed it, so it's a great opportunity. And again, the goal here is just to try and keep the novelty fresh for our students, to keep them engaged, to keep them coming back, smiling, having fun, and getting all the value out of that summer program. Once again, we will have our free summer lunch program, so that will take place beginning on July 8th. That's offered Monday through Friday, as it has been in the past, in that each offering will start at 11:00 a.m. and be offered until 1:00 p.m. So the locations, I believe these are the same as last summer, so Parker, Lincoln Hancock, the Ward II Community Center, Snug Harbor, and Montclair. And again, this will be offered beginning July 8th until August 16th. So in addition to our summer scene programming that we have taking place, we just wanted to include in this presentation an acknowledgement of the work behind the scenes that many teachers will be taking on throughout the summer. Specifically, at the high school level, we're putting teams together across math, science, ELA, and social studies to design curriculum maps. So we do have curriculum maps, but we need to make sure that they're up to date and fully aligned with the current standards. So we're putting teams together this summer to begin that process, and it's really important to note that we're having Quincy High School, North Quincy High School teachers work together so that there's district alignment in this curriculum mapping. At the middle school level, in a similar fashion, we will be putting together teams of educators for social studies and science. These are to investigate two different curricula. So it's social studies, we're going to look at investigating history, which is a curriculum, and then another for science is Open Say Ed. The goal with both of these, within those subjects, is to develop and plan implementation for a portion of the units. So it's not a full rollout at this time. It's really to get to know this curriculum, to see if it's something we want to jump in even further over time. So we want to be careful, as these new assessments are coming out, we need to get to know these assessments, and along that timeline, we also need to be getting to know, getting to know curriculum as it's updated to help students prepare. And specifically, as I've mentioned during many, many presentations, performance assessment tasks. So these are, these can be pretty tricky for our students. So what we have to do is really take a look at our existing curricula and make sure that it's adequate in the preparation for students to take on these types of assessment-based questions. And finally, at the elementary level, we have a bunch of new schools taking on ST math, specifically, that's Snug Harbor, Lincoln Hancock, Squanum, Marymount, Parker, and Clifford Marshall. So they'll be attending their rollout preparation and planning meeting so that they're ready for the 24, 25 school year for ST math implementation. And then also, we'll be offering with our partnership with Commonwealth Learning, a structured literacy course. And so that is really aimed at helping literacy teachers to get a starting point at the Orton-Gillingham Principals and understanding kind of how that can be embedded in their general ed instruction and support all readers at all different levels. So again, a lot of work that we might not see it because it's not taking place with students during our summer programs, but a lot of work going into, going into the curriculum over the summer. So just to recap, you know, where we are right now, and just a quick status update, the outreach to students and families for the invitation-only programs has already begun. Registration is ongoing, but it's definitely happening. And that's also the case for the open enrollment programs, so, or I should say, the open registration programs. So we made that link available, the registration, on April 29th. We'll continue to leave it open till the end of May. Numbers are piling up, so kids are registering, or I should say, their families are registering for them, but we're looking great there. We're right on track to look at, compare what we've done to last year. And also, staff will begin participating in professional development, meeting with facilitators as they prepare to carry out the programs that Dr. Perkins and I just presented. And of course, we're in the process of getting all the supplies, materials that we need to effectively run these programs. And just to wrap up the presentation, I'll hand it back to Dr. Perkins.
So before we end, we just wanted to say a big thank you to Mayor Koch and you, the school committee. These programs are amazing, and they really are unbelievable opportunities for our students, and we so appreciate them, and we really appreciate your support. You've let us do this for so many years now, and it's just amazing. I just, we just can't thank you enough. It has a huge impact, and we really do appreciate the support. And so for everyone out there that is watching that has not yet signed up, there is a QR code. You can take your phone right up to it on the TV screen, and it will take you right to the summer brochure, and you're able to register. So thank you again, and we're really excited for a fun, safe, and exciting summer.
Thank you. This is amazing. This is really great. Every year, it's amazing. This is really great. Thank you. Do you know how many staff members offhand? There are a lot of programs here. How many staff members offhand do we need to fulfill this program?
Last year, we had about 250. That doesn't include Paris, but I think we're actually doing really, really well. We are, we actually, if we compared, and we do, we compare from year to year, we are, we immediately were ahead of the game from where we were last year, so I don't anticipate really any staffing issues at all.
And we generally can staff from within our staff. We don't really need to do any outreach for additional staff to provide for our camps. We can have our own, our own teachers?
For the most part, it's our teachers. If we need a couple of people here and there, we do post externally, and we have gotten some really great people, and some of them end up becoming our teachers after the summer program. But, you know, so I would say some of the programs, like special ed sometimes, you know, the students with disabilities, we may need to look at higher some external candidates. But for the most part, I would say 99% of our staff is our own QPS teachers.
That's wonderful, because then those are recognizable faces to our kids. That's wonderful to have. Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Hi. Thank you so much. Great, great program, Ian. I'm really, really happy about stemming the regression for our ELS and students with disabilities. So I think that's just so enormous to be able to do that and have these kids have some continuation, because we know what they lose if they don't go to school for 10 weeks over the summer. So it's, I mean, everybody loses something, but these kids are much more at risk. I have a couple of questions. Is the pathways to success at the high schools, that invitation only to, based on what their needs are academically?
Yes.
So it's any student who would need credits would be?
But do you invite them?
We invite them, yeah. The guidance centers give us a list.
Their parents understand they have the need. That's what they're hoping for. And the other two programs, just because I think for clarity for people who are watching this at home, the Summer Youth Works and the Mass Higher programs are income-dependent. So not everybody can apply for those.
Correct.
That's right.
Because they won't get in unless they have a low income.
That's right.
I just think it's important that if we're talking about these programs, that the people watching, you guys should know that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Gottr.
I love these programs. It's super exciting, and they just seem to grow every year. First of all, I mean, when the disabilities programs, I love the innovation, you know. I mean, obviously, we heard before from the advocates come up here and talk about after-school opportunities as well as summer opportunities, so the fact that you're thinking outside of the box and expanding those opportunities is great. On the ELL, are the numbers steady, or do they just continue to grow and explode in terms of how many people sign up over the summer, English language?
Yeah, we've expanded it, definitely, but it's, I actually have the numbers from last year for the...
Are there capacity issues, or you just take whoever?
No, we really just focus on, you know, students who are at a certain level of language proficiency, and so we don't turn anyone away. You know, we'll hire enough staff to be able to accommodate. So, but we've definitely, I would say the Camp Can Do. So Camp Can Do last year had 92 students, about, just about, and the Middle School SWEL Academy had 65.
And last question, remind me how we pay for this? Is this, is any of this grants? Is it in the FY '24 budget? Is it in the FY '25 budget? And if it's grants, are there grants that, you know, what percentage of the grants are expiring after this summer? Do we reapply every, how does that all work?
So we fund a lot of it through ESER, but we also do set aside money. We have historically every year through Title I. There is definitely some money set aside in the district, always has been, for our special education programs. That's always existed. So there was, so there is that funding too, and we will expend that first, you know, typically on a year when we don't have something like ESER. But a lot of it is funded through ESER. Mike did apply for a grant that was, I think, $30,000 above?
Yeah, it's about $32,000, and it's been tentatively approved, so we're just waiting to finalize that.
And when does ESER expire? I guess that's a Jim Maloney question.
September, I think.
Yeah. So what percentage of these programs are subsidized by ESER?
I think a good amount.
A good amount, yeah.
Like the Quest program is, is, not the special ed program, special ed programs. We've been able to expand and service more kids because of the ESER funding, but the Quest program, I would say, is, I would say, all of the programs were able to get bigger. Some of them we funded through other grants and have historically funded, like the Bridge to Reading and Math. Camp Can Do, we've always funded. We funded it through Title III. You know, SWEL, we typically have funded through grants. Students with Disabilities programs, we have funded before. Again, it's gotten bigger. I'd say the biggest one is like the Quest, that's a big one, the theater program. So some of those extras, the credit recovery, we've always funded. Again, we've increased it.
So you're saying ESER is multi-year, and it expires in September?
Yes.
And it's covering, what, a third of the program?
Jim?
Yeah, I think probably more than that.
Seventy percent of the summer program.
Correct.
So next year, it's going to be tricky.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I knew that we were going to have you in, and maybe you'll talk about ESER when we talk about the budget, what that impacts, but, okay, thank you. But it should be a good year.
It's...
A good summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, forward to it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Perdiels.
Thanks. As always, this is awesome. It's just one of the many things I'm super proud of our, of you all in our school district that we offer families at no cost. And a couple of questions, a couple of comments, and a suggestion or an idea. Questions first would be, so you might have answered this, the enrollment numbers right now as compared to kind of last year at this time, does it look like it's similar, or? Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. And the Bridge to Reading and Math, you had said that at one point, it was just Bridge to Reading, and then it was expanded to Ann Math. Is that, are they two separate? Is there a Bridge to Reading and a Bridge to Math, or is it both together? Is it either or?
It's, they're together. It's together. So it's, for students who, you know, may need remediation in both.
Okay, so is there less time, say for instance, on reading than there used to be when it was just Bridge to Reading? Do you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to...
Yeah.
Understand whether we've, have we added more math in, or has it, did we have to take away some of the reading help to?
We haven't taken anything away, but we've definitely added more math. We also, some of the things that like aren't in the presentation, but we just, we do, are, we have, like, so part of that program, we have tutors that are there that pull kids out, right, for Orton-Gillingham. We have a ton of kids who get Orton-Gillingham services over the summer. We also have therapies that are built into that, so we have therapists at multiple locations. Some kids just do drop-in services, some kids go to our program. So I wouldn't say we've taken anything away. I think we, you know, we work with the principals, and they'll identify like who needs what, and, and then we kind of group them from there.
That's, that's great. The grouping would be fantastic. For those kids that may, you know, be sort of okay on math but still really need those reading skills, I wouldn't want them to not do it because they maybe thought that they were okay on the math side of things.
Yeah.
That's good. And then my, the last question that I had was, so definitely our highest priority, it seems, and should be, like filling the gaps, special ed programming. I remember there being an advanced program at Central one year. Did that get folded into some other program? Is that part of the Quest program now?
It's part of the Quest program.
Okay.
Yep, so we kind of, we combined all of those programs into the Quest program. So that is, you know, for students who are, you know, could maybe do some acceleration, things like that, that is what the Quest program is for.
That's excellent, okay. And then a couple of comments. One, the theater camp, I cannot say enough about my, all three of my kids did it last summer. It was unbelievable to go from they had, they brought in objects and created their own script and wrote the script, and, I mean, costumes, the whole, the choreography, and it was amazing at the end of it. And not only could kids do a program in the morning, or like most, my teenage kids or most teenage kids, they could sleep until 10:00, and then they would still want to do it because it starts at 1:00.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really great forethought on that. And Mr. Dusette is amazing and phenomenal, and Ms. Capitello, I think, is part of that as well.
Mr. Bowe, too, yeah.
Yeah, and so I think that that's, and it's just such a great opportunity because with our sports, we have a lot of feeder programs, but this is really, it seemed like a really true feeder program to try to get those kids that were interested in, in middle school and theater, and really just show them what a high school theater production could be like. And I just can't say enough good things about that. And the option of work for the high school kids that might need it, that is phenomenal as well. And my idea, so my suggestion or my idea, so when we talk about Point Webster Middle School, we know we're talking about grades five to eight. When we talk about Atlantic Middle School, we know we're talking about grade six to eight, right? But when we talk citywide about middle school programming citywide, I think it gets really confusing for families in Quincy Point, Southwest Quincy. They're not sure which they are, right? So we mean elementary programming for grades one to five, but those fifth graders have been middle school kids. So I think that it's difficult when we use terminology like that when we're talking about a citywide program, and I just wonder if maybe there's a way to just note or to keep in mind for next year to just kind of be just respectful of those fifth graders that are going to school in middle school, that we're not calling them elementary school kids because they have to, it's something they're giving up that they have to go to middle school. So if we could just maybe, maybe grades one to five program and grade six to, something like that, just to be a little bit more aware and respectful of just that, what they're giving up to, you know, not be part of that. giving up to, you know, not be part of that elementary grade.
I might have said elementary here, or we might have said middle school, but in the program brochure, it says, like, entering grades five.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we don't have elementary?
It's by, it's like, by the, we can check, but we certainly can make sure that, you know, that doesn't creep in places. We typically refer to it as the name of the program, and then entering grade one through entering grade five, or entering grade six, or entering grade eight. Because I can tell you, not only is the middle school, you know, as you said, middle school can be confusing for people, but whether or not the student is entering, am I a current first grader? Do I sign up for first grade? Or do I sign up for entering second? We have, we've, we've kind of, you know, figured that out, which is why we do the entering. But for a while, that was very confusing for people, and people would sign their kids up for the wrong grades. So it happened pretty consistently. And so I think we've teased that all out, but we definitely can take a look and make sure that, you know, that terminology doesn't slip in any place.
Yeah, just to make sure. I mean, they're used to being around middle school kids now in those two schools, so having them go back with first graders might be a little, you know, difficult for those. So just something to keep in mind for how we handle fifth grade for those areas. Thank you.
Mr. Begoli.
Just a comment, are there, are there any offerings that we don't offer? I mean, to hear what you presented tonight, if there's something that someone can't find, I mean, it would be remarkable. But again, where the credit should go, to the mayor, superintendent, our SLT, and our frontline, our frontline teachers, who are giving up part of their summer vacation to provide these programs. So I think people have to be recognized for what they do, behind the scenes, and then on the front line. So I'm proud to be a part of this.
Yeah, we totally agree. And I would say, this city, if they, if they can't find something here, they have the REC program, which is pretty amazing. So I think that this city does provide something for everyone, for our students in the summer. It's awesome.
Agreed. Mrs. Hubley, first.
Thank you. One question, one question, one point. The Theater Program, what is the cost for that one?
No cost.
There is no cost for that one. I wasn't sure if there was a cost. And to Ms. Perdi's point, I totally agree. I think we really need to be putting fifth grade with sixth grade. I think that should be like the, the sweet spot right there. I think that if we had some programming that was for fifth and sixth graders, I see that being a great, especially with the Theater Program. I think kids that are in fifth grade would be much better equipped to be with the sixth graders and something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I was just thinking, forward-thinking, and if, as the ESER funds disappear, programs like the Theater Program could possibly be picked up by REC, Recreation Department. Seems to me like that would be a better match for it than, than in the school system. So we can look at those kinds of things, too, where it's more, it's more, it's not academic-based, it's more enrichment-based.
They used to have one, they used to have a Theater Program, because I know, because I did it. So I ran it, but, for REC, but I'm not sure if they still do. But definitely, we can work with Michelle and talk about things like that.
Yeah, I think we should do that. Thank you.
I do have a question. Mr. Guttrow asked about the budget, and I was wondering, because I thought it was mainly funded by ESER. Do we have like a ballpark of what the cost of the program, summer program is?
It's about $500,000, I think.
Okay, for everything. Okay, well, we're going to have to think about that, you know, because it's an amazing, you know, offering to our kids in the summer, and hate to see it just go away or be diminished or, you know, at next year because of the funding. So thank you for everything. We're lucky. Whatever happened to those days when school's out for summer? And not anymore, right?
Not anymore.
But thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to-
Next on our agenda.
We have school committee goal-setting document. For my colleagues in your packet, there is a memorandum from Mr. Hardy from the MASCE when we had our strategic goal meeting on that Saturday, and March 23rd. And it's just a kind of a summary and a draft of the goals that we had talked about that day. So it's something to have in hand, and I don't know that we need to have any discussion on it, but, you know, I don't know how we go forward with looking at some of these things and implementing. But, you know, just within our own committees and school committee meetings and things like that. Any questions? Yeah, Mrs. Perdiros.
So I was a little unsure as to, so does this, because it says draft goals, does that mean that, will these be posted so that they could be public? I know Mr. Hardy was pretty specific that they should be public, there should be a public document that, that they can, people can access. Would they be?
Sure.
Okay.
We can do that.
Do we have to vote on them to make them not draft goals, but actual goals, or?
Yeah.
Did you want to wait, did you want to wait until there was feedback before you voted on finalizing them?
Yeah.
How do we?
I think we need to, so I think to Mrs. Perdiros's point, you know, because this is draft, a draft of what we came up with at our meeting, where is it appropriate for us to discuss what we really want to do and follow through and fine-tune, you know, some of these goals so that we can post them? You know, we don't want to post something that, this was a day's worth of discussion, that's just kind of, you know, putting things out there and, that we want to, that we want to implement, but, you know, maybe we need to fine-tune them a little bit. So how do we do that?
You can just set up a subcommittee meeting.
So which, which subcommittee would we be looking at?
Most of us is all policies.
Or you could just do a separate full second.
Yeah, you could just, you could do another work.
Just another one.
Goal-setting workshop for a follow-up.
Yeah. And any comments over here? Mrs. Lebo.
I was going to say the same thing. I thought we could do another workshop and maybe prioritize these, because now with, with the information about the budget and budget shortfalls that may be coming up, some of these things we may not be able to prioritize next year. So we have to be more mindful of them, that, what we can do and what we can't do, and what we think is the most important. So I think a workshop, I mean, I don't think we'd need Mr. Hardy at the workshop to do this.
No, 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 just, just us.
We could just do it.
Anyone else? No.
I agree.
Mr. Guttrow? So we'll, we'll talk about setting a, another goal, goal meeting to fine-tune and pare it down. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Social Educational Collaborative Board Representative, Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you. Every year, the school committee has to appoint a representative to sit on the board at the Social Educational Collaborative. Just as a reminder, we have about 80 students from Quincy that currently attend the Social Educational Collaborative and three or more programs that are down there. So if I could request-
Superintendent Mulvey, the representative of Quincy.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have School Committee Policy Book, Section 1084 for hazing. Mr. Guttrow.
This is an update, or to examine whether or not we need an update on the hazing policy. So this is just a referral to Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. The next on the item, School Committee Policy Book, Section 2410, Public Participation of School Committee Meetings. Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I think that we need to, since post-pandemic, we need to get back to, open forum is open forum, and if you submit a letter, we will post it. But to have to have read all those letters that were basically form letters, you know, for, for what took, I think, 35 minutes of time, I think that the pandemic is over. So I think we should just look at that policy.
So have open forum, and then, and then post the other?
Yeah, if people write in, we will post them. We will read them and we will post them, but I don't think they need to be read aloud.
Okay.
But we'll discuss it.
In committee, okay. Thank you. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which is a roll call vote to approve the regular minute meetings of April 10th and grants that have been allocated to the school system. There's one, two, three, four grants. We also have approval of, under the consent, student travel, which Atherton Howe and Central Middle School, and also student travel overnight for-
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So now we have under Additional Business, I am going to bring something to the Additional Business, a new addition to tonight's agenda based on an item that could not be reasonably anticipated prior to tonight's meeting. It's regarding a City Council vote that took place on May 6th. And I'm making a motion to seek independent legal counsel and, if necessary, funding to request an opinion on the Quincy City Council's vote on May 6th.
Madam Chair, a point of information. One is USG, I can't make a motion. Item two, if it's a vote on something like this, it has to be on the regular agenda. This is a violation of the open meeting law.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, so how do we do this? We have to put it, post it on the next one, even if it's something that was not reasonable notice prior to tonight's meeting?
No, the committee is going to take a vote on an action. That is an action item. That is not something additional business. That, that has to be advertised, posted. It may generate open forum comment. So I, I think it's clearly a violation to try to do it tonight. I think it has to be on the regular agenda.
Okay. All right, well, we'll continue this and put it on the next agenda for our meeting. Yes.
If it was a violation for the City Council to do what they did, frankly, I think they're out of order. I was brought to tears, brought to tears when I heard what the City Council did to undermine this body who works very hard. So-
We'll bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I just, just want to make sure that's said.
Mrs. Lebo.
I would like to add something to that. I think that this is going to have repercussions across the state. I've talked to colleagues on other school committee meetings, and they are appalled that it happened, and that it could happen. And then what, what does a school committee really have the authority to do? When, when an outside body can change some of your things. So this has a big implications if it goes through, and whether or not it's legal or not, that's one thing. But I just think, I've, I've spoken to colleagues in different committees, and they're very concerned that this happened.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, next on our agenda, Communications. Upcoming School Committee Meetings, regular meeting on May 22nd, 2024, at 6:30 PM in City Hall. June 12th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Cottington Building. Upcoming subcommittee meetings at the Cottington Building, May 15th, 2024, teaching and learning at 6:00 PM, policy at 6:45. Reports of Subcommittee Policy, Mr. Guttrow.
There were several items that we discussed, all relative to health policy, and the, they need to be pulled out, removed, completed sections listed in Number 14 from the Policy Subcommittee, which are Items 7.5.2, 7.5.3, 10.11, 10.11.1, 10.11.2, 10.11.3, and 10.11.4. We, we discussed these in Policy Committee, and I think there was actually a discussion at the last council meeting about it. So these require a voice vote. I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we are going to go into executive session, and will not be returning after the meeting. So this-
We need to do a motion of, so I'll make the motion. We're going to discuss contract negotiations with the caveat we will not be returning to regular session.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you.